All right. Are we set in the back? All right. So it is seven o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. And welcome, everyone here. This is the regular city council meeting for Minnetrista for December 2nd. Our first order of business is I'm going to ask that you remind everybody turn off or put your electronic devices on silent or airplane mode so they don't disrupt the meeting. And second, would you please join me for a pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with all its rights and justice for all.
So again, welcome also to those of you that may be watching later on in YouTube. So I'm first going to make some introductions. With us this evening, we have our -- I'm going to start way on that end, right behind our Director of Administration. We have our Public Works Superintendent Gary Peters with us. And then we have Cassandra Taber, our Director of Administration. We have our City Clerk is Chris Lindquist. And then with WSB, our City Engineer is Allison Falsky. And Council members Shannon Bruce, John Chumperlin, Mike Molitor, Pam Mortenson. I'm Lisa Whalen. I'm the Mayor. And to my right, we have Mr. Barone as our Administrator. Brian Grimm is our Finance Director. David Abel is our Community Development Director. And then, welcome back, Mr. Beatty. Hopefully, you had a wonderful vacation. Mr. Beatty, Ron Beatty is with Kennedy and Graven, our Attorney. And then on the end, we have our Chief of Police, Paul Falls. So with that, approval of our agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and seconded by Mr. Molitor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. So we're going to move on to special presentations. Mr. Grimm, I think that's you. We're going to start with the overview and presentation of our final levy and budget, and then open it up for public comment.
Great. Yep. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilman. We talked in our work session about the budget and levy, and as well as previous meetings, and so what here will be an overview of that discussion, as well as what was all the documents that were in your packet, and a bunch of numbers summarized, hopefully, if I can hopefully speak to it eloquently. Desired outcome for today's meeting, we always have to each year adopt our final levy by resolution before the end of the month, basically. So I'm seeing this as our last regularly scheduled meeting before the end of the year here. That's what we're looking for tonight. Sort of our timeline, so we met back in August a couple times to review the budget presentation and the preliminary tax levy. On the 3rd of September, we did certify preliminary tax levy increase of 5.87%. We went through the final process over the last, or most recent few months here of preparing and completing the final budget. Couple items that came about was a recommendation to bring the final levy down to 5.66% increase with applying the refinance refunding of the 2010 bond. It saved us a little bit of a debt levy over the next several years. And we also adjusted our general fund expenditures to bring our projected use of fund balance down to roughly $165,000. That had been at about $225,000. So our ongoing goals, just for the public, I think they've, you know, the council's seen this numerous times with the public as to, obviously, first and foremost, we want to make sure the city's financially, financial stability going forward as an ongoing entity. Each year, the big item is to address our capital improvement needs, whether it's roads, equipment, all those type of things. Water infrastructure comes out of our utility rates, but that is included. Staffing and benefit levels, we always monitor those to make sure we're matching our, providing good customer service levels. And a big thing the last several years has been to continue funding our payment management plan and make progress there. Here is the levy summarized. Basically, there's the four main components to it. The general fund is our largest. The debt fund levy, which is associated to pay our principal interest payments on our debt with our associated projects, road projects, et cetera. Our road maintenance dollars, that's in conjunction with the payment management plan I just referenced. And then, well, we did add back in $50,000 to our capital levy for equipment this year. Till previously, we had usually levied dollars for it, and most recently, we'd done a lot of equipment certificates to fund that. And this is trying to get back to at least some cash levy in addition to the using an equipment certificate. So you can see the total gross levy and net levy there, amounts respectively. One of the things that we did over the last several months between when the preliminary levy was adopted is see where we were at as far as our revenues and expenditures for year-end 2019. And our expenditures are coming in right about where we thought, but our revenues, we actually are projecting we're going to have a surplus in our, what we budgeted for permits and licenses compared to what we're actually seeing during 2019. So this has been factored into our budget, the additional revenue, and it's actually helping bring down our budgeted use of fund balance that we had for 2019. It's bringing down a portion of it, still not eliminating entirely. See a trend here. The blue line here is our revenues the past, going back to 2016. It's actual for 16, 17, 18, and then these are the budget projections. You can see our revenues have been lagging behind our expenditures by a little bit. You can see in 2019, we've had a little bit bigger gap, and then we're trying to bring that back down in 2020 so I can get back to a more balanced budget. So we're working on getting this line item back up, you know, even to this and going up sort of just at an inflationary dollar amount each year. This is more, I guess, numerical summary that helps explain what I just was talking about. It has a few different key factors here. It shows our net levy over the last six years. Our general fund reserves used in 2015, we actually had a surplus, but then in 16, 17, 18, and now projected for 19, we're using down some of our fund balance. And then you can see the associated percentages. In 2015, we had a 69% fund balance in comparison to our next year's expenditures. For 2019 and '20, we're down more around that 50% or a little lower, so, which is fine to be, you know, right around that 50% is a good range to be six months of operation This chart here just shows our, as part of our budget, we have our equipment plan each year, and you can sort of see we've, it sort of ebbs and flows here based on the needs of our Public Works Police Department, our technology. This is basically for 2019 here, I think we're budgeted for just under $300,000 worth of equipment-type expenditures, what we've got budgeted for 2020, I should say, excuse Chart here shows basically a property that's valued at $500,000 in 2010. We actually had lowered our levy a few years back in the early, I guess, 2010s, and then kept it flat. And you can see pretty much this property's paying about the same amount in city taxes as they were 10 years ago, which is, I think, most people would probably consider that a win, I would hope, between the growth in the city and what the city's done with the tax levy. People's city taxes over the last, you know, trend really haven't gone up much at all, Tax impact, so basically with the 5.6% levy increase, we know, we've had, we had a growth in the city of about 2.5%. So when you take those together, most people are seeing, you know, around a 3% if they had an average valuation increase. 4% valuation increase between, which is basically taking 350, if your property was valued that in 2019, now it's 364. That's that 4% increase. You can see that, you know, for that level of value property, annual difference is about $27. You go to $500,000, it's about 51, $750, $75, you know. So, you know, if you make that on, as a, break that down to what it costs a month, you're talking basically two to $6, you know, a month as far as what, on average, you'd see as a tax increase. If you had, you know, if someone didn't have a valuation increase, they're probably seeing their property taxes, you know, potentially even go down a little bit or whatever. So it all, I mean, and that's, and that's based on what the county assessor, you know, values all the homes in the city of Minnetrista. Cool slides here is just to show maybe a couple different items. Note, in 2019, just the slice of what is actually the city portion of your tax bill. This is a West Tonka property, a West Tonka School District. Basically, the city portion is about 23%, 1121 out of the 4886. I know for this upcoming year, I think West Tonka and Watertown Mayor had referendums passed, so this, you know, probably our slice of the pie, I guess, just on simple math, will probably go down a bit, or percentage, you know, of actually the total tax bill will go down, I guess I should say. Here's just an example of Waconia School District. You can see even just the difference in the two properties within different districts within the city. You can see that 5,800 versus 4886. I don't think Waconia did have a referendum this year. Essentially, they'll have it in a subsequent year, but not for this year. Some of our assumptions for 2020 and commitments. We did have our labor contracts in place for 2020. Our capital equipment, we're planning on funding, doing an equipment certificate in early 2020 at the same time as our Watertower project. And then, we've held off on doing the equipment certificates the last couple of years, so we actually have a negative fund balance in the year temporary, and that'll be, I guess, offset or replenished, or however you want to call it, I guess, or corrected in 2020. And then we do have our funding, our payment management plan and our road maintenance, so additional $125,000 as per our phased-in plan. We do have the $165,000 in general fund reserve dollars that we're looking at using as far as helping keep our levy at a reasonable amount, but trying to get back to that balanced budget. And we do, and that does project out to a 47% fund balance at the end of 2020. Just in summary, later in the meeting, we'd be looking for action from council on a final tax levy to approve and certify to the county. I think we've had good discussions at work sessions on the budget levy, capital improvement plans, financial management plans, et cetera. Staff's proposing to reduce the levy slightly down to the 5.66% from the 5.87% in September. The roads are a big piece of that. And I guess another fact, or nugget or fact to point out is the general fund levy actually has not increased since 2012, and really has, and had decreased from 2010 before that. So really, we've kept our general fund levy really flat while we've increased and put more money into roads. So that's where you'll see, you saw on that previous slide where the general fund levy had the increase. And then, I guess later in the meeting, we'll have the business items, that's the formal resolutions for the tax levy budget, financial management plans, et cetera. So if anyone has any questions now, or if there's anyone here for public comment.
Any questions by the council? Otherwise, I'll move to the general public. Mr. Benson, I believe you're signed up. If you, I'm assuming you want to talk about the budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, taxes.
Okay. So come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Okay. My name is Donald Benson, and I live at 1300 Hickory Drive. And I also own three additional properties in that area. I own property, open land, which is 1200 Rainbow Road. And I also own a house that my daughter lives in, one of my daughters, and that's 1205 Rainbow Road. And in addition, I have another property that my daughters live in, another daughter lives in, and that's 1300, 1370 Rainbow Road. And the reason why I'm here is, to start off with the bang, is that my property taxes on all four properties went up 43%. That's 4-3%. It went from $14,677 to $20,951. The Minnetrista part of that went up 44%. It went from $3,017 to $4,357 cents, or $57. And I, I've never heard anything like this, that taxes would go up 44%. I can't afford that. I can't afford to pay $20,000. I couldn't afford to pay $14,000 before, and now I'm having to pay $20,000. And to show you how ridiculous the taxes are, the house Megan, my daughter lives in, is 1205 Rainbow Road. And this is a house that was moved from Minneapolis about 30 years ago, when they put 35W in. It's a little bitty bungalow, and it's way beat up. It's my, my son-in-law's been trying to make it worthwhile. And they appraised that property at $448,000, which is just absolutely asinine. My other daughter, Beth, who lives in a relatively new house that we built, it's about 10 years old, is, the estimate of the market value is $282,000. Almost.
Half.
This little piece of crap house, it's almost, that's like, not quite $100,000, but it's $70,000. This little bungalow that's beat up is, I mean, I'm just, I just don't know where to even begin.
Mr. Benson.
My land, my land went up.
Mr. Benson?
Huh?
So you're talking about land valuations and property values. Have you spoken with the county assessor, Kevin Nguyen? Those are issues that you need to bring up with Kevin Nguyen, who is, who is the assessor for?
I just got my tax statement, so.
You should have received back.
There's a meeting in Hennepin County. I don't know if that's the place to.
No. You, you should have received a valuation notice back in March. And that's where they tell you what your valuation it was and what it's being moved to. And that's usually done in March. And then, in April, we have, then you have an opportunity to talk to the county assessor to have them come out and assess or to reevaluate if need be. What I would suggest you do is call Kevin Nguyen. I think there might be a process where they can do a retroactive. I'm not sure.
I know going forward.
Is that a done deal?
I'm not sure.
For 2020, it might be. Because usually, it's always that March-April process where you get the valuation, and then we have the open book meeting where people can work with him there. That's always the next.
But the best, the best option, because it's, it sounds to me like they increased the value of your properties significantly. And then there's the other.
The new house, my daughter's house, was not, not increased appreciably. My, this is so asinine. My house went from, I mean, it's just.
Well, it's a market.
My house went from $740, $774,000 to $1,003,000.
Right. That's a valuation, so.
Yeah.
We can't change that here?
Well, Madam Mayor and members of the council, if you recall, Mr. Benson's been in here recently doing some land use changes. I'm not, again, the conversation needs to be had with Kevin Nguyen.
Right.
My speculation is it could have something to do with that. We did a comprehensive plan amendment along with a rezone, which in turn, that of course increased the value of your property.
I don't, well, you're correct, but I don't know if that happened. See, I think his properties would have been evaluated January, February timeframe, and I think they were here after that.
Yeah. It was a conversation with Kevin.
So, we can't, so we don't have the authority to change your valuation, especially now. So I would highly recommend that you call Kevin Nguyen at the Hennepin County Assessor's office.
I believe we have business cards.
And we have business.
For Mr. Nguyen outside by the front desk.
What's that?
There are business cards for Kevin Nguyen, because he, there's a whole rack of business cards on that table if you want to grab one. Gary, Gary's going to grab one for you. And so, he's the person from Hennepin County that's assigned to the city of Minnetrista, because he deals with property owners on their valuation here.
Yeah, I knew they changed the ag preserve, it had something to do with trees. I talked to the people, and they changed that a lot, that you can't. But the valuation of the house is, is just crazy. So I'll, Kevin Nguyen?
Yeah.
Yep.
And again, I don't know what he can do for you for 2020 taxes, but.
Well, I can't afford this, so.
Well, talk to him.
Thank God almighty.
Yeah. He might, I don't know what the process is.
What the heck?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Sorry about that. All right. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak about the budget, or has some questions about the budget?
What's that?
Do you have any questions about the budget?
Yeah, I've covered most of them.
Well, thank you.
Excuse me.
All right. All right. So nobody else is here to speak regarding the budget, so I'm going to close the public hearing or session, segment of this. And then, as Mr. Grimm pointed out, later on in our, on our agenda, we will be approving a budget and so on. So with that, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. I almost skipped over Mr. Jensen. We have our Watertower update with SCH, and Miles Jensen is here to give us an update, and we're looking for approval for plans and specifications and authorizing the ad for bids. So, Mr. Jensen, thank you for coming. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, and staff. So you got a packet from us that was fairly hefty.
No tests on that.
We memorized it. All 750 pages.
Thank God for electronic data. Anyways, so what I wanted to do, you got the memorandum, and I was just going to go through those things that are on the first page, right there. So we're on schedule from, you know, what we had talked about a few months back, once we got the project going, you know, on the identified site. So, you know, the summary, a half million gallon tank, we're looking to bid the, this composite tank toward the end of January, January 23rd is what the date we've selected. And I believe it's at 1:00 right now. Anyways, that's what we're proposing. And then, the construction would occur between the years of 2020 and 2021 with a, with a final completion in September of 21. And I want to go through that schedule again, because I think a lot of people think, wow, it's just a water tower, you can snap that out in six months. But they, they take a long time, longer than the treatment plant. So, but yes, at the end of this little thing, we're just hoping to get authorization to bid, or to, you know, run the ads for soliciting bids on the project. And then, and then we've adjusted the logo to just a plain text logo on two sides, you saw that. And so the cost estimate, there's our current cost estimate right now with, you know, as the, as the plans get more and more done, you know, in theory, the contingency can come down, because we're a little bit more refined in what we're estimating. And so, with only a 5% contingency right now in construction, we're looking at two and a half million. So I think that's right in the ballpark of where we've been talking about all along. So I'm just going to flip to the schedule, and if you have that, schedule page. So we've graded out.
What page is that in?
The things that we've.
55-0.
55.
That we've completed to date. So today, in bold there, the council meeting, December 20, December 2nd. But moving forward, at least in our way of thinking, we would run the ad for two weeks or three weeks, December 16th through the January 7th. Bid date would then be on January 23rd, council meeting. So I would be back on February 3rd for the award. And then, moving forward, a month of contracting through the month of February, shop drawings through the month of March, and it will be all of March to get those, those done. Then, as soon as they can get on the site for soil correction and the foundation, construction is, you know, right around when frost goes out. And we're looking at three months for simply getting the foundation ready to go. Meanwhile, they're working on the tank part and, you know, getting all the steel and all that stuff for the concrete. So that'll, would show up then sometime in mid-May. And then they'd start, start building the tank, June 1st to September, so that's about three months. They'll start erecting the bowl, the steel part, on-site sometime when they can get their materials fabricated and on-site. So we're speculating that's going to be around September 1st. And they would continue welding through maybe the end of October or something like that. But, so those plates will come with a primer on them, and then they prime, they blast and prime everything in, at their shop. And then, but they'll leave a strip on all the pieces for the welding, because once they start welding, they just burn the paint back anyways. And then, they'll come back later on, and they'll paint, starting in some, the summer of '21. So can't paint over the winter or anything like that. That's why in Minnesota, the tanks take a little bit longer. So then, June 1st of 2021, you'll see them painting, and then they'll raise the bowl up and put it in place, and then do the necessary work to get it to stay there. And then, finish work in September, and hopefully, we'll have the, the tank online come the end of October. That's a schedule that happens a lot. So people think, oh, gosh, you know, a new water storage tank, it'd be nice to have it in the summer. But because of this winter thing, it just never happens that way. So a lot of our tanks are done, you know, in November, we hope. So this one should be, should be right on schedule for that.
So, Miles, I don't see the well drilling in here anywhere specifically, and I don't know if that takes place.
The well, we don't have a well or the treatment plant proposed at this time.
Oh, sorry.
So the well would come with the treatment plant?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So that's, all we've ever been doing there is just identifying the space.
Okay.
To show, you know, where a well could go and where the treatment facility would go and things like that. And then the ad for bid was also, you know, put in there just to simply give you an idea. That's in the, in the bid documents, but that's all I have, if you have any questions.
So, Mr. Jensen, shop drawings, is that something your firm does, or does that, is that the contractor?
So the contractors prepare the shop drawings, the material suppliers and the contractors, they prepare all of the shop drawings, they send them to us to make sure that, yes, this is what, you know, we've asked you to build, and just verify that it matches with our plans and specs.
Okay.
So. And then I see, there's the, there's the logo. So block logo on two sides, east and west. You'll see they're rotated a little bit to the south because of the tank being back a little bit, you know, just trying to, trying to get it to go down. You know, you can see it as you come closer, but still, out along.
So one of the things we discussed at the last meeting, I think with Mr. Katzenberger, is we didn't want all the fancy, yeah, color and stuff. But if we just did, if we did, if, I'm not saying we will, but I'm just saying, if we did the Minnetrista logo only, do you know what kind of a cost difference that would be?
So I'm not certain what you're asking. Are you asking that logo right there?
If you just did the Minnetrista logo versus, see, so when we saw their drawing before, the underneath part was green, and then there was a blue band, and then there was the logo, and then another blue band, and all of that. And we said, you know, that's, that's more than we need. So I'm just questioning, if you did just the logo all in blue, for instance, what would that do to the price? I'm just asking.
I mean, it's a pretty small amount anyways, when you take into account the whole project. But I'm going to say that to do a logo like that, just monocolour, if you will.
Right.
Instead of that, it might be $2,000 per side, $3,000 per side at the most. It's, it's not a lot.
Okay. Well, is that something we can decide later?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You know what we can do? We can, we can bid them both ways, and then have them put the prices both ways in the documents.
Okay.
And then you know, and then you just pick one.
If it doesn't add any cost to that, then maybe we can just look at it.
Yeah. That's not a big deal. We can.
Okay. Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Can you just summarize, how tall do we end up having to go here?
What's, I'm sorry?
How tall?
Oh, gosh, I don't remember, it's going, well...
I'm sure it's in the, it's back somewhere, in the 700 pages.
Why do I have this in my head? It's like 165 feet, or is it going to be 170 feet?
173, the number I remember. I know we're on a high chunk of land, so it doesn't have to be as tall.
Yeah, it came down, remember on that one chart?
Yeah.
Yeah.
See if we can find it.
I just wanted to know where it ended up on the chart.
I apologize, I don't exactly remember. To me, to me, it was kind of a standard height tank, is, is, you know...
So about roughly 170?
I think, I think so. I could dig around and let you know, I have it in my computer.
Okay. And then, you were talking about stabilizing the earth or whatever, how, yeah, then do you do soil drawings, or how do you determine that it's...
We did all that already, and it came back, and I think we talked about this, but it came back that the soil needed to be improved, the foundation needed to be improved, because they're, they're looking to get to 3,500 or 4,000 pounds per square foot of support. And so, there was, there's two plans that were put forward for vetting by our geotech staff. One was to dig out an additional eight feet, so I think we were looking at something like a 20-foot hole or some huge hole, and then they'd put back in better fill. And then the other one was to hydraulically ram, essentially, you know, aggregate, in their aggregate piers that they put down, and those two seemed like the, probably the, what I would call the least cost option to stabilize the soil, and I think that, that our engineers have now decided that this, doing the ram pile rather than all that excavation is the way to go. So, I think if you look in the plans, that's what you'll see.
Okay.
So, it's not like we're not a lot, you know, if the contractors come back and say, hey, you know, it would be cheaper if we did this excavation method.
As long as the tower doesn't tip over.
No, that's bad. I don't know that I've ever heard of a water tower that tipped over. We talk about it all the time, but I don't know that I've ever heard of that, even in tornadoes, they just kind of stand.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, Miles, there was one resident that had a concern, obviously, he was a nearby resident, with runoff.
Good point.
Is that, has that been looked at at this point, or is that like down the road?
No, that, that's been taken into account, and I believe if you look at the drawings, you'll see where there's the stormwater retention pond, and, and if you recall, we, we looked at how big it would need to get to be for the proposed treatment plant too, but we've scaled it back right now just for the water tower and then the gravel drive.
So have you spoken, or has anybody on your staff spoken with the neighbor, I think it would be the neighbor to the south?
I, no, I...
Regarding the stormwater runoff?
I haven't heard that they did it, and the reason, the reason being is, is they, you know, we felt like we had a pretty good understanding of what the amount of runoff was...
Okay.
And so, we were just going to make sure that we had that taken care of.
So the runoff will maintain, or be retained on our property?
Absolutely.
So it's not going to go onto his? I think that was his biggest issue.
I would clarify that a little bit, to say the additional runoff is not going to leave your site.
Okay.
There was runoff coming off that site all along.
Right, okay.
So we didn't change that part of it. All we did is, you know, created a retention base in equal to the amount of additional hardpan that was, you know, is proposed.
We're not making it worse.
Huh?
We're not going to make it worse.
Correct, simply put, we are not making it worse.
I had a quick question, and it might be for Gary, but this tower is really close in proximity to the St. Bonnie Water Tower. Is this connected at all to the St. Bonnie system at all, anywhere?
No.
Okay.
No, it is not.
I think we do have an interconnect with St. Bonnie Water for, I think we have a couple interconnects with them, that's for emergency purposes, so, yeah.
So, so this is connected or no?
Well, essentially, it will be, because they're connected to our water system, but not all the time. It's, it's closed, except for in emergencies, there's a valve that they can open to, to give us water if we need it. It's for fire suppression.
Fire suppression, and they had their well actually, their main well went down, and we had opened it, late summer, we actually opened it up for them to get water, because they were out of water.
So we gave them water?
So we supplied them with some water for a day to replace, to help their systems.
So it's, it's a two-way thing?
Correct, they need that in order to do that. We have an interconnection with Mullen also on both ends, to, just for emergency situations like that. We've utilized Mullen twice since I've been here.
So I think to clarify my answer, the, the volume of the tower and the elevation and all that stuff was exclusive to Minatrista needs. The fact that you're able to have interconnects, that's nice, but that's a, a short-term thing, and it wasn't something that we engineered in.
Right, we're not constantly providing them with water.
No, I, I remembered that we had an interconnect with St. Bonnie before, and I just didn't know if this was adding to that, or it was just curiosity. Thank you.
Okay, good. Any other questions for Mr. Jensen? All right, thank you very much.
I'll look at the height, I'll tell you.
Yeah, okay.
I found that the overall height is 140 feet.
Oh, 140?
It says the tank height from ground to overflow is 119, overall height is 140, tank diameter is approximately 50 feet, on page 276 of our packet. It's actually under the coding systems for, I assume that's specific to ours, even though the capacity is wrong, capacity is 750,000, it's actually 500,000.
And what page are you on?
It's, it's 276 of our packet, I don't know what that would be of your...
It must be a section?
Yeah, it's section 09, 9713.
Let me look at that.
It just, it says overall height 140.
Yeah, but, and then it's a capacity, it should be 500.
Right, that's why I'm not sure if this is a generic, or if it's specific to ours.
Or, or are you noted, so we got to make sure, this, they're only 95%, just to be clear, so we still got to go through that last vetting.
All right. Okay, so we do need to approve the plans and specifications and authorize ad for the bids for the, for the water tower. So if there's no further questions, do I have a motion to do so?
Some moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Mr. Miles, and Mr. ...
Mr. Miles Molliter.
Molliter, by Mr. Molliter, to approve the plans and specifications and authorize the ad for the bids for the water tower in our southeast, southwest corner. Any further questions? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. So, we'll wait to get, you'll get back to us on that height. Oh, okay, great, great. So next, we move on to our consent agenda items. Are there any that you wish to remove? Otherwise, they consist of approve our regular meeting minutes from November 18th, 2019, B is approve our claims, C is approve and finalize the 2019 budgeted transfers, D is approve our 2019 budget amendments, E is accept public improvement for Red Oak, public improvements for Red Oak Development, F is approve status change and market increase for Robert Goodman, our building official, and G is approve our market increase for Gary Nelson, our building inspector, H is approve our planning commissioner's appointments, J is approve park commission appointments, I'm sorry, that was I, and J is accept the resignation of Cassandra Tabor, who is our director of administration. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through J?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion has been made by Mr. Trumperland and seconded by Ms. Bruce. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. I just want to say to Ms. Tabor and to, to you personally, it's been a pleasure, a delight working with you. I understand you have a wonderful, wonderful opportunity in Blaine, and we wish you the very best, unfortunately, for us, fortunate for them, and I'm, hopefully, we'll see you at certain workshops or conferences, but I know it's a wonderful upward move for you, so, and again, you've been a delight and a wonderful staff member here, wonderful, wonderful to work with you, thank you.
And I'll second that.
Same here.
So, next, we have our public hearing, and this is our 20, so we have a public hearing for our 2020 fee schedule, we did talk about this at our work session, so, but Mr. Grimm?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilor, this, we did have a good discussion at our work session on this agenda item, it starts on, I love seeing 8/11, it seems like it's a big, like, War and Peace, or some, I don't know, or some big novel or something. I never have read War and Peace, so I guess, but it's, it's definitely a long packet, so, yeah, I guess the, as far as the fee schedule, there wasn't any, I think, major changes this year, I think we talked about, you know, the, the water utility fees going up 4%, there's some other, you know, changes that are notated in the packet with the, the strikeout, and then the written, or next with the, the new rates. There is the one item that Councilmember Bruce did bring up as far as the, that we don't license dogs anymore, so we can incorporate that change into the dog impound fees on page Couple other items, I think in the work session that we talked about bringing up and looking at maybe next, probably summer, or, you know, or June, July timeframe, but otherwise, I guess, yeah, I'll stand for any questions, otherwise, we would, I suppose, open up the public hearing, I guess, would be something we would need to do at some point during the discussion, and then staff would be looking to adopt ordinance 459, which adopts the 2020 fee schedule.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments to, to staff? We went through it at our work session and made a few comments, and, like you said, the dog license adjustments, and we'll probably be looking at this again mid-year, maybe during the summer too. So with that, I will open the public hearing, since this is a public hearing, if there's anybody here that wishes to speak in regards to our 2020 fee schedule, this is an ordinance, so it will be then hopefully published. I don't see anybody here that's going to be speaking for that, so I'm going to close the public hearing and move it back to council. I'm looking to, for council approval to adopt ordinance, ordinance number 459, which is the 2020 fee schedule.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Mortensen made that motion, and Mr. Trumperland seconded that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And next, also kind of a housekeeping item to approve, I need a motion to approve the publication of ordinance number 459 by title and summary, so we don't have to publish the whole entire thing.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so Ms. Mortensen made that motion, and Mr. Molliter seconded that. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion passes. So that concludes our public hearings, and we will now move on to our business items. First is our First Amendment to Woodland Cove Master Development Agreement and Consent to Partial Assignment of Master Development Agreement. So, I'll let David take it, and I don't know if the applicant wants to make a statement or not, but I'll go ahead.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Ronald, go ahead and present the item.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council, in 2012, the city entered into a master development agreement with the developer for Woodland Cove, and it followed about six months of negotiation. The idea was to provide an overall view of what everybody recognized was a very large project, larger than we had ever dealt with, to give it some cohesion and, and have everybody understand where the project was going. It was both beneficial to the developer as well as to the city to do that. We entered into that agreement, and the debate at the time was how long should that be in place? The statute provides certain guarantees for two years following final plat approval, during which period the city can't change various development standards, and that's so that projects can be completed, playing by the same rules. It's very common for large projects such as this, for a developer to request and for the city to grant a greater period of time, and the discussion at the time was how, how long should we do that for? 10 years was agreed to, with the understanding that that may not be sufficient, given the size of this project. Well, we're approaching the eighth year of, of this project, which has been very successful so far, but the developer looking forward has recognized that some additional time is going to be necessary. So the request before you tonight is to extend that master development agreement for an additional seven years, so that it would run through April of 2029. So what does that involve? I think it, I think the simplest way to think about it is there are probably three large categories of, of issues that are dealt with. The first is fees. The current agreement, the agreement which will run for another almost two and a half years, froze the fees at the 2012 level through the end of last year, through the end of 2018, after which they were indexed according to a schedule, and that will continue to be the case through April of 2022. The development, the extension proposes with one minor difference, that the fees would revert to the then-current fee starting in April 2022. In other words, for the last seven years, the fees applicable in this subdivision would be the same fees applicable throughout the city, and so, likely to result in an increase of fees. The second piece is certain development standards, specifically with regard to roads. Again, the development agreement, the master development agreement provided certain road specifications which have been and will continue to be in place through April of 2022. This development agreement says, starting that date through the end of the extension, that the then-current standards would come into play. We know that we've changed the standards since 2012, so those would come into play and be used going forward, unless the parties agree to some better standard, but that's at the discretion of the city engineer. The third piece, which probably has the greatest practical significance, is with regard to the land use approvals. Again, statute says that within, for two years, the city can't change its comprehensive plan or other official controls with regard to use, development density, lot size, a list of, of certain standards, again, with the idea that the development ought to be able to be built out under the current rules. The effect of extending this would be that the city would be precluded from making those changes for another seven years. In other words, you couldn't change the zoning ordinance, or the subdivision regulations, or the comp plan with regard to those specific matters for an additional seven years. There are a bunch of other development standards that could change, but the, the big ones would, would not be able to be changed. Potentially, that's a significant issue. I think the practical question, though, is was the city going to change those things anyway? Staff has had extensive discussions about that, and it staff's conclusion that it is highly unlikely that the city would have proposed any changes to those development standards during that period of time anyway. If that's true, then you're not really giving up anything. And of course, the, the other side of that is while the city is bound by not, by that, by not being able to change those standards, the developer also is bound by that, and in other words, the development... And in other words, the development has to be carried out with a consistent set of plans. And so that essentially is the net effect of the extension of the development agreement. The second piece of this is a request for an assignment, a partial assignment of the development agreement from Woodland Cove to MI. We've done that before. The developer has developed certain phases of the subdivision, but certain other phases have been developed by other developers, particularly Madamy and more recently MI. When that has occurred, it's been important for this master development agreement that I just described to be assigned from Woodland Cove to the other developers, so that they have to comply with it. That's an agreement between those two parties. The city is, that can't go into effect unless the city consents to that. We've done that two or three times before, when other developers have come in. And so that's simply what we're being asked to do, again, with regard to about 89 of the remaining 152 acres. So those are the two pieces of the request before you tonight.
So Mr. Beatty, you were talking about we can't make any changes, but if we made zoning changes or basically any other changes, that would have to go back to the Met Council, wouldn't it? Especially if it's density issues.
Well, yes, I mean, any, the normal rules for any land use changes would apply.
Yeah.
But what the, what the development agreement says, the master development agreement says, is that the preliminary plat, if you recall what happened, is preliminary plat approval was granted in 2012. And part of the development agreement, the master development agreement, is that the city remained open for 10 years to considering final plats that were consistent with that preliminary plat. Otherwise, the preliminary plat approval would have lapsed, and they would have to start over again. It was kept open for their benefit, but also for our benefit. So as they come in with each phase, what they're really doing is final plating that phase inconsistently with the preliminary plat. We're simply being asked to keep that open for another seven years, basically to be able to carry that out. Secondly, those, the use, development density, lot size constraints in the statute have been extended. So we can add other development requirements, and those may or may not require comp plan amendments or consideration by the Met Council. We just can't do anything, whether it's a comp plan amendment, rezoning, or a plat change, that would affect use, development density, and lot size. In other words, they will be given another seven years to carry out the vision that everybody has agreed to with regard to this subdivision.
So just to expand on that just a little bit, I would assume that a caveat or exception to that would be that if they came to us with a suggested change, and we agreed to it, both sides agreeing to it, provided everything else, when it works with Met Council and such, that we could still make a change if we wanted.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Is it Mr. Flum? Newman, I'm sorry. I know it has. Do you want to make any comments? Just state your name and address.
Madam Mayor, members of council, my name's David Newman. I appear on behalf of Woodland Cove. Ron's outlined it, I think, very well. We joke about the fact that in 2012, I was arguing with him that 10 years wasn't long enough, and he said, "When we get there, we'll talk about it." Unfortunately, we're both still alive to be able to talk about it.
Yes, that is fortunate.
We're negotiating with MI Homes right now. They're going to acquire about 89 acres. My guess is they'll have about 400 lots in inventory between the stuff they bought from Madamy and the stuff they're going to develop. That's about a six, seven-year supply for them. And so that's why this is so important for them, that they need to have the assurance as they move ahead that we're still going to be honoring the plat. So I'll leave it at that and be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Mr. Newman? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, too. All right. Ron, very good explanation. Thank you very, very much. Any other questions? Otherwise, as Ron stated, we have two things that we are looking to approve is, one is the First Amendment to Woodland Cove Master Development Agreement, and I think it's all in one, isn't it? And consent to partial assignment of the master development agreement. And this would be, do we have to indicate to who it's going to be assigned to?
The assignment, I don't remember whether the assignment is specific to MI. I think it is, too.
Okay. So I'm just wondering for the motion. So the motion would be First Amendment to Woodland Cove Master Development Agreement and consent to partial assignment of master development agreement to MI Homes.
It is, it is in.
All right.
Yeah, your, your, the adoption of the resolution authorizes execution of both of those documents. And the partial assignment is specifically between Woodland Cove and MI Homes of Minneapolis-St. Paul LLC.
Okay. I just want to make kind of clear for the record. So that would be the motion. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Ms. Mortensen. I think we all understand the motion. I won't repeat it again. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. So next, we move on to approval of our 2020 city calendar. Ms. Lindquist?
Madam Mayor, members of the council. Council reviews and approves the calendar of meetings throughout the year, so that city officials, staff, and members of the public know what to expect for the year. The city council typically cancels public meetings close to both the Independence Day holiday and the Christmas holiday each year. So there's only one scheduled council meeting in July and December, respectively. And we've done this, it's past practice that we've done this. In 2020, the city will be holding a presidential nomination primary, and I think I've mentioned this to council before, on March 3 of 2020. This will become a conflict with our regular scheduled meeting on March 2, since this chamber is a polling location. And we need to set the polling location up prior to the election. Staff is suggesting to move the March meetings from the 1st and 3rd to the 2nd and 4th Mondays, with the planning commission moving to March 30, since there is only, since there are five Mondays in March. So the proposed work session and regular council meetings would be held Monday, March 9, and Monday, March 23. And then, as in any other election year, we've, in November, the election is actually November 3, so that would be the same situation. We need the polling, we need this room for the election. And also, the council needs to certify the election between the 3rd and 10th day after election. So staff is requesting that the work session and council meeting be rescheduled, excuse me, to Monday, November 9. So that would cover the meeting and canvassing the results. And then canceling the November 16 meeting, since there's only, we only have five days before we would be having another meeting. In your attachments, it lists them out for you. And council, again, council meetings, work sessions will begin at 5:30, and council meetings begin at 7:00. And then the planning commission also takes, normally doesn't meet in December due to the holiday.
So the only change, the change in the number of meetings is one fewer meetings, because there's only one in November?
Correct. And then in March, we'll change it from.
Right, but that doesn't change the number.
Due to elections. And we'll probably be faced with that, not with the PNP in two years, because that's every four years, the presidential nomination primary. So we'd be faced with that situation again in four years.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Otherwise, is there a motion to adopt the proposed 2020 calendar, city calendar?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Mr. Trumperland to approve the 2020 city calendar as presented. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. So next, it's approve annual city council appointments and designations for 2020.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. We usually do this in our first meeting in January, but due to the requirement of LMCD, the council will be making appointments and designations hopefully tonight. If you look at your attachment, I have, in the blue is what was in 2019, and in the red is the proposed for 2020. You'll notice that there are some that are left blank, that it's for the council to discuss, and fill in those blanks for 2020. The other change is in the designations, with the resignation of Cassandra Tabor, Director of Administration. Staff is recommending David Abel, the Community Development Director, in her place.
Would we, so I had that highlighted, too, but, so obviously, I don't think we're going to put Cassandra, Ms. Tabor, on the personnel committee, for instance. But wouldn't, if we hire another individual that is handling HR, wouldn't that individual take that position?
At that time, the council can go ahead, and we can, we can update or amend this at any, at any time during the.
So you're saying effect of, actually, it would be then effect of December 19, David would then be, Mr. Abel would then be on the personnel committee, if there should be anything that comes up?
No, Madam Mayor, the Personnel Committee will just be down one member. The item that the clerk was talking about had to do with depository signers, signers.
Oh, okay.
So David would be able to, that gives us a third staff member here to sign checks that the council approves. So at the end of a council meeting, I don't know, 50 or 100 checks generally are processed and then signed. Mr. Grimm and I are generally the ones that sign those.
Right.
In my absence or Mr. Grimm's absence, Cassandra's been signing those. But with her absence starting mid-month, we needed a third staff person. Otherwise, we're calling one of you council members to come in and sign about 50 or 100 checks, if you'd like. So our thinking was that you'd probably prefer not to do that. So we have three people that are assigned.
That's fine. I'm sorry, I was referring to the Personnel Committee.
Yep, and the Personnel Committee will just work one person down.
One person down, okay.
And then potentially have that new person, once hired, to the Personnel Committee, correct.
All right. So, so we'll just eliminate Ms. Tabor from that Personnel Committee. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Those are in blue, and so your 20 appointments will be everybody but her.
Yeah, absolutely. Are there any, is there any, anybody wants to change anything? Keep it the same?
One you're going to have to change, Madam Mayor, is the one for Lake Minnetoka Conservation District.
Okay, so I have spoken with a gentleman, Michael Kirkwood. He is a Minnetrista resident. He lives on the lake. He's had some interaction with the LMCD. He knows something about them and how they operate. And I did ask him, I said, "If the council is interested in appointing you, would you be interested in the appointment?" And he was very interested. And so I would recommend that we appoint Michael Kirkwood to, as the city's representative to the LMCD starting January, because I know Mr. Malater has indicated he'd like to be done by the end of this year. And then, and then, so his, his term actually, so Mr. Malater's term actually goes until the end of January. But we can appoint Mr. Kirkwood starting January, and then just, and then continue that appointment through 2023. So the, Mr. Malater's appointment would have ended, it's a three-year term, would have ended the end of January, but because of other commitments Mr. Malater has. So rather than not having anybody there in January, Mr. Kirkwood said he'd be willing to step in. So otherwise, are there any other changes that you wish to make? The only thing I'd say is Mr. Malater doesn't have a lot of assignments.
I've already served three months doing double duty.
As I say, you can maybe do a few extra Personnel, Planning Commission meetings, but. All right. So with that, then, I don't think we need to make any changes other than what was last year, and we'll add Mr. Kirkwood to that LMCD representative. Okay? Then is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. And any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And that was Mr. Malater that made that, and Mr. Trumperland that seconded that. Thank you. So next, so now we move on to our budget approval. So first, it'd be adopt and approve the 2020 tax levy. Mr. Grimm?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, so this is on page 869 of the packet. And I think the presentation highlighted some of the main points regarding the levy. The amount that was the preliminary levy increase back in, the net levy back in September was a 5.87% increase. The new net levy being presented is slightly less. It's a 5.66% levy increase from 2020 over the 2019 final levy, due to refunding one of our existing bonds. So the total gross levy option that is being proposed in the attached resolution on page 870 is $4,945,212. You know, we get some fiscal disparities dollars back in references there, the memo. So our net levy actually comes down to $4,809,707. I guess that would be the recommendation to adopt Resolution 16719 for the total amount of the $4,945,212. If the council chooses to do that. And it's, yeah, she basically outlines on page 870 there the different portions, the general fund, the roads, equipment plan, and all the different bond issues that we, the debt levies that we levy for.
The debt levy you're listing here is $3,953. I'm sorry, the net, the net levy.
The net operations levy is $3,953,978. And when you add the special levies, which are the debt levies, it's $8,557,29.
For total, I don't see.
But the gross, the gross levy is what you want to go for, the operations is $4,894,84. The total special levy is added to that is $8,557,29 for the total of the $4,945,212. So the top of page 870 lists them out that way. And it sort of, it groups them down below, whether it's an operational levy or a special levy or debt levy.
Right.
On pages 871 and 872 sort of do the same thing. So those are the county forms that they like us to use, I guess, or whatever. And that shows, you know, page 871 shows what's general revenue, considered general revenue levy, and, which is basically anything that's not debt. And then bonded indebtedness is after that. And then page 872, again, lists out our different debt levies or special levies there.
Okay. Questions or comments? Otherwise, I just, I just want to say a couple things. I, you know, it's never easy. It's always hard to raise taxes. You know, we always look, however, the council has looked at how will this impact our wallets? And what are our needs? And are we going to be able to meet our obligations? What are our priorities and our goals? And are we able to achieve those with this budget? Is the budget reasonable? Is the increase, is the levy increase reasonable? And what's in the best interest of our community as a whole? These are all things that, that we look at when we are making a decision of this nature. And again, it's never easy to say, "Well, we're going to have to increase taxes." But with that, we're also going to be providing continued quality, fire protection, police protection, public works. And we're also going to be continuing. public works, and we're also gonna be continuing our road improvements that we've been doing for the last five years. We're on schedule for that. And the other thing too, part of the discussion at our work session was, we have, if you will, a fund balance, and do we want to deplete the fund balance more? Or do we want to kind of maintain the fund balance at around the 47%? So this, what staff is recommending, the 5.66% increase does maintain that fund balance at that healthy level of around 47%. We also will be using less of the fund balance, which is also a good thing, because for a number of years, we've been saying that we want to try and achieve a balanced budget. So with all of those things in mind, I think this is a good budget. I think staff did a fabulous job this year on trying to accommodate all of our wishes. We made some tweaks here and there and took out and shuffled some things around in order to come to a little bit less than what we did in September, so. Any other comments? All right, then is there a motion? To approve the 2020 tax levy, adopt and approve the 2020 tax levy? So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Motion was made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Mr. Chamberlain to approve the proposed 2020 tax levy as presented in our packet. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
No.
Motion passes 4-1. Bruce dissenting. Next, we have adopt and approve the 2020 budgets, the general fund, the special revenue, the debt service, the CIP funds, and enterprise funds. Mr. Grimm?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, so yeah, this is on page 873 in your packet, and what it does is it wraps in actually all the detail budget that was, I think, on pages three through 47 of your packet. And you can see if you go to page 874, all the different components of our budget, the general fund, the capital improvement equipment fund, our bond, our debt funds listed out as well as our special revenue and enterprise funds. You can see one of the larger items is the last line item on page 874, the enterprise funds, which the vast majority of that is the water fund, which we have our water tower project, which we talked about earlier tonight with Mr. Jensen, who spoke earlier about that. As far as the special revenue funds, the biggest portion there is our commitment to the road maintenance funds, which we've talked about. That also includes the, some of the state aid funding coming in to do the Halsted portion milliner overlay, so that is money coming in from the state, but then money being expended out, so that's also been included in the budget for, you know, all encompassing all the different projects we have going on next year. So the total revenues and other financing sources projected for next year is, for all funds is $13,42685, while the total expenditures is $14,44,033. You may X-Y, you know, Y the difference. Well, the big majority of that is we are gonna plan on spending cash for the, doing the Sunnyfield Tower out of the water fund, you know, we're gonna order a bond for the new tower, but then do cash for the, we've talked about more as a maintenance item, as well as we do have the, you know, the general fund spend down that we're still having. So when you add in a few of those items, that's why it's a, you know, planned spend down of some funds on hand is the difference in the, between the revenue and expenditures of the all funds budget. So I guess I'd stand for any questions there, otherwise we'd be looking for a motion to approve our 2020, I guess, all funds or citywide budget.
Okay, all right, questions there?
I have one question. Does this close our discussion about financing of the water tower?
I would say it gives a guideline, but it doesn't close it until we actually get into and see the bids coming on the water tower project, and we'll be looking at it closer as far as whether, you know, there's a certain mix of a little more cash or a little less cash, but it definitely, I mean, the budget serves as a guideline, but when it actually comes toward the project is when we can, and actually issue bonds for it is when we, you can deviate from that, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, the budget might not, might be close on the budget. It's a matter of how we're gonna fund it.
That's what I'm asking. Because it lays out here that we're taking, you know, X amount down for cash, because my concern is, you know, we talked a little bit about cash for the maintenance, but that was about a half a million, and I had been looking at, or we've been talking, I was suggesting we've talked about before we brought the water tower into this, or before we brought the water tower maintenance into discussion, that's a fairly recent item, we're talking about maybe closer to 1 million of cash for the new water tower, while if we're only taking a half a million for the maintenance of the existing one, that would mean a half a million go towards the funding of the new one, so we wouldn't bond entirely for the new one.
I think we'd looked at one, closer to one and a half, 1 million mix, but you know, then you got the 5.75 for the sunny field, and I guess I'd still would rather, I've got, you know, in the all funds budget projecting, I mean, we're already running at a little bit of an operations deficit with the new debt we've added online, so I guess, I still would recommend planning on bonding for the whole water tower and using cash for the maintenance projects, or maybe going a little less, maybe bonding for 2.2 out of the 2.5, but...
But that, we don't have to decide that tonight.
No, no, we don't have to decide.
We have to see, yeah.
My point is, I will be supportive of this so long as we're not tying our hands to that financing.
We wouldn't be, if we wanted to deviate a little bit, from my perspective, you, I mean, this is a budget, but if the council decides, hey, we want to use a little more fund balance in February or March when we actually bid this, that's the council's decision to make, so.
Right, it's kind of the same thing we were talking about for the road projects that we're doing, where are we gonna take the money? And I think Mr. Chamberlain pointed out, maybe we want to look at taking some money out of the stormwater fund to pay for some of our portion of this, so those are discussions we can have later on.
I just want to make sure that we're not subtracting this down just yet.
Right, exactly, no, I understand, all right. All right, good, anybody else? Otherwise, is there a motion then to adopt and approve the 2020 budgets as presented in our packet? So moved. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Mortensen made that motion and seconded by Mr. Chamberlain. And I, Brian, too, any of these budgeted items can be adjusted as we go along.
Yeah, I mean, some cities, organizations, even, and we've been pretty good about not, you can do budget amendments multiple times during the, you know, as you get into 2020, you can decide, yeah, just finance a little different. Yeah, it's, the budget's, you know, a roadmap to try to line up with your projects and priorities and stuff, but obviously there's, the council can make...
Make some changes if need be.
As it goes.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
No.
Motion passes 4-1. Bruce dissenting. Next, we have adopt and approve our updated financial management plan. Mr. Grimm, again?
Yep, Madam Mayor and Council, so this is on page 875 of the packet, and this would be our updated financial management plan that we've been using since 2008. I think I made note in the memo for the previous 10 years before last year, it was formally adopted last year, it was decided to use more as a planning tool, at least for 2019. I'm fine with it either way, I guess, is whether it's used as a planning tool or formally adopted, but I want to, I mean, I think it's good to always do at least some forward-looking and basically the plan on page 877, I guess, the summary plan that, you know, ties in our general fund, our debt, you know, our roads levy, et cetera. I only looked out a couple of years, 2021 and 22, because basically, once you get beyond a couple, few years anyway, it gets a little harder to really, I mean, all of it's just trying to plan and look ahead, just sort of look, you know, what's beyond in the next couple of years as possibilities, so.
You know what would have been good is if, so the bottom line you have here, tax levy change in dollars, and it would have been good what we, to see what we had in there for 2020. I thought it was like over 7%.
Yeah, I mean, I think most years, basically as things and different information comes about and as projects get more refined, you know, a lot of times it does come down, you know, a little bit, you know, where in the original plan it might be, yeah, like you said, 7, and now we're at 5.66 or whatever, so.
And somewhat, it's gonna be somewhat determined also by the growth, you know, like this year we had about 2.5% new home growth, so.
Yeah, next year it might be 3 with all the homes we've added this year, or something there, closer to 2 and 3/4, 3 or whatever, so. But yeah, I guess it's just something I think, at least from staff's perspective, it works well to keep looking ahead and to show, you know, have council involved in the process too, as far as, you know, what we're looking at in future years, at least for a couple years out or so, so.
Okay.
Brian, I had a question on, if you go back on page 41, in our packet, it has a CIP for public safety vehicles and all of that. There is, it looks like in 2021, 22, 23, and 24, under police building equipment, there is a line item there for $10,000 for each year, and it says station and range maintenance. Is that the gun range?
This is on page 41 of the packet, you said?
Page 41, and I'm assuming that's in our financial management plan, looking out that far ahead.
It would be, yeah, potentially part of the overall, like we need to do, equipment or, you know, if we need to do an equipment, it'd be part of the overall package or whatever, you know, that's the 300, you know, when you add it up.
Right, well, and I'm questioning why it's in here when we haven't as a council decided that we're planning to do that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, what was the title? What was it titled?
It says station and range maintenance.
Yes, I believe that was back when we were having discussions, we were trying to put a price tag on that, and so it was just put in there. Again, CIP, as you know, is approved each and every year, so as we look forward, we just put numbers in there to try and determine what the needs may be, and that may have just carried over. Certainly, we would evaluate that every year. Obviously, we wouldn't need that if we haven't even discussed the range at this point, so that could probably be removed if that's what, I don't have it in front of me here.
It's removed for 2020, it's in for 20, it's in as a line item for 2021 and beyond or whatever, so.
Correct, and I think what we did, we have done is just continue to push that out because we haven't had renewed discussions about that topic, so that's why it's probably still in there. But if it's in future years, it's not a, I guess it's not really, it's not been approved, and we have no intention of going there unless we have that discussion, so we just keep pushing it out.
And in my opinion, when you put something in there, it's sort of a tacit approval that that's what we're planning to do, because this is a plan, and unless we've approved this and we really are planning to do that, I'm, I'd like to see it taken out.
Well, then you'd have to take everything out that's in the CIP.
Well, no, because there are, a lot of these things we are planning to do, and they need to be done, but this is, this is something that...
Well, then maybe you would just say station maintenance and leave it in.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I don't know if this clarifies it at all, but much of what's in the Public Safety Department's CIP is just for planning purposes, because we have an enormous amount of equipment that has relatively short life, and so just for planning purposes alone, we put all kinds of items in there, many of which we run much longer than we probably should, and we just continue to push it out. So this is merely a planning document.
And I understand that, and those item purchases are not controversial purchases. The gun range is, and that's why I'd like it taken out.
How does the rest of the council feel?
Or change the title.
Change the title.
Yeah.
Well, that sounds like, that sounds like what I'm hearing. It's only a number, and you're just giving it a title as to what it could be used for.
Correct, and I guess at this point, I would be perfectly fine taking that out until we have a discussion, a specific discussion with a plan for a gun range, that would be fine.
I guess my question is, this is the CIP, I believe we've already approved that, but what you're looking at on the specific item that we're talking about on page, I believe it's 77, if I remember correctly, is the, is the overall financial management plan, not the CIP? So I guess my question is, have we already approved the document that's on page 41? I thought we did via our other motions.
Well, the other motion would have been, I mean, it would approve, it would approve 2020 specifically, the dollars are in there, I guess, for 2021 and beyond, so.
Then, I guess, if that, if that's the case, what I would prefer to do on this particular item, the planning document, the financial management plan, is do what we did this past year and not formally adopt it, but just use it as a tool.
That's fine. And that's fine. I just wanted, I just wanted to have it noted that the CIP other items aren't controversial and that is, and I think we ought to stay away from putting those controversial things in a CIP until they're decided on.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem approving a long-term financial plan. Again, it's just a tool, we're not approving future budgets or future CIPs. I, we can accept it, maybe that would be a better, better term, to accept it and designate it as a planning tool. Many organizations do long-term planning, I know the Mount Fire Department does a long-term, actually much longer than this, a financial plan, and this, you know, goes out a few years, but whatever the, you know, maybe just accepting it is the better...
I think if we're gonna, I would prefer just not take action on it, because if we're gonna take action on it...
I agree.
Because then there's other things that I'm gonna tear into here that I don't think are properly vetted out, because we haven't talked about, we haven't talked about anything, we've spent all of our time, as it should be, on 2020. We haven't spent any time on 2021, 2022, and so I'm not comfortable approving that.
And I'm fine if the council, it's just past councils have wanted to do more of it, adopt along with it.
No, I think it's, it's good to put it together, I appreciate that, when we do reference it, I'm not saying it's not right, but I think it's a tool, not something I'm gonna formally adopt.
And that's, that's fine if that's the preference of this council.
Sure, yeah. All right, so anybody else, Mr. Chamberlain or...
I find it's a great tool to use.
No, I find it the same as a tool, I don't look at it as, that we're obligated to anything, I mean, anybody's budget is simply that, it's kind of your best projection, so as something for me to look at to get a feel for what the future might be or what there might be out there, that's what I use it for.
Yeah, yeah, okay, just a quick question. Mr. Miles, were you able to find that height? Because if you do, I thought I'd give you an opportunity to tell us and then, if you'd like to, be on your way.
Actually, I wait till you got to 7, that's where I am.
Okay, we can wait, all right. So next, we adopt and approve our updated utility financial management plan.
So, Madam Mayor and Council, so yeah, this is on page 885, and it's the same, well, actually, you know, these are pretty much the plans we talked about during the October and November work sessions on the water, sewer and surface water funds. I guess, yeah, it's council's preference whether they want to use it as a tool or more adopt the utility plans. You know, it's got the different, like on page 891, it's got the water tower, you know, new project, it's got the water tower maintenance, projects for Sunnyfield and Kings Point scheduled in the next few years, et cetera, so whether the council, you know, wants to use this more as a tool or adopt it, I'm fine, either way, but I think it's, it's good information to, and it's similar to what we looked at in, you know, obviously, we use it as part of our process during October and November to set our utility fund rates, to set our utility fund projects, et cetera, so.
Okay, do you want to adopt it or just use it, take it as informational and use it as our guiding tool?
I'd vote for the latter.
All right.
I'd vote for the latter.
I think that's in keeping with what we...
I'd like it to assist.
All right, all right, thank you. So now, before we move on to Mr. Jensen, do you have that information? Why don't we do that right now, because we have...
So, I think the short answer is it's 149 feet from the proposed grade to overflow, and then with the dome, there's about another five, six feet, so it's, it'll be around, total height will be... it's, it'll be around, total height will be a hundred and fifty-five feet, and that's pretty consistent with that April memo where we inserted one B, I think it says a hundred and fifty-six, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. All right. So next, we'll move on to our MOUs, Memorandum of Understanding for the Union Insurance Reopeners, Ms. Tabor.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So this is a three-part approval process for these MOUs, because we have three unions that we're working with. So each of our unions are currently on a three-year labor agreement, so twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty. This is the third and final year of this labor agreement, and we did state that there would be an insurance re-opener for twenty twenty to negotiate this provision only, we typically do this annually. This is fairly simplistic, because these MOUs set forth that the parties agree to maintain what we currently provide them for city dollars towards their benefits, and currently maintaining the provider, which is Public Employees Insurance Program, for the second year of a two-year contract with our health provider. So all three unions are looking to, and currently in the process of approving those MOUs with basically no changes over last year. So pending union approval, pending council approval, the staff recommends the approval of the MOUs for the maintenance of our existing cafeteria benefits and our existing insurance provider. This memorandum of understanding for each of the unions shall be in effect for all of twenty twenty, and that will become effective as of the first. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but again, this is something we do annually, and there aren't any major changes this year.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, then I'd entertain a motion to accept MOU for Local Forty-Nine.
Some.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded for Resolution Number One Seventy-One dash Nineteen. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes, five oh. And next is also accepting a motion to accept the Memorandum of Understanding for Local LELS One Sixteen.
Some moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Bruce seconded that, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes, five oh. And next, we move on to accepting the last one, and this is for LELS Three Forty-Three.
Some moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. So next, we move on to administrative items, staff reports, Mr. Barone.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and council. Just as a reminder, this is our final meeting of the calendar year that we will next gather on Monday, January sixth, twenty twenty, which is five weeks from tonight. Between now and then, we're gonna have a number of days where city offices will be closed for the holiday, just to remind the council that for this year, last year at this time, we approved a change into, in our holiday schedule, so we will be closed all day on Tuesday, December twenty-fourth, and all day on Wednesday, December twenty-fifth. We will also be closed all day on Wednesday, January first, fifth, or first, twenty twenty. What's missing is the New Year's Eve holiday, we used to be closed half a day for both Eves, and now we're open all day on New Year's Eve. City staff wants to be gone, they'll be taking their own time on that. Again, happy holidays to everybody in advance, and then one final comment, just want to congratulate Ms. Tabor on her new position, sorry to see her go, she definitely will be missed, so.
Anybody else? Ms. Felsky.
Madam Mayor, members of council, a few items I'd like to update the council on. One is with regards to the Halsted project, we did receive a response from Ram a couple of, about a week and a half ago, and it's a, it's a very lengthy response, and so we, as staff, would like to have an opportunity to go through that, have a discussion prior to, Ram has requested to meet on that, so we'll, we'll stay tuned for that, but just wanted to let the council know we did receive a response to Ram from Ram.
We're not gonna give an inch.
Duly noted.
Yeah.
Another item that I wanted to bring to council's attention is with the North Branch ditch project, so as, as we discussed originally, this project would require a state aid variance. In addition to the state aid variance for the pavement, as we discussed, when we got the topographic survey back and looked at the grades of the road as well, it, we've discovered that it doesn't meet the design speed, so when we reached out to the state aid offices and indicated that we'd be requesting a variance on two counts, we had a phone call with them, and they indicated that it's, that their comfort level wasn't there to support a variance there. So we're now looking at a situation where we don't believe we would get a state aid variance for that, just that the, the board has historically not gone against a staff recommendation. So we'll take a look at, one, the state aid fund balance with the Halsted project. Finance Director Grimm and I have had some preliminary discussions on what our state aid account balance will be, so that we won't get into that situation where we see that fund balance get into its maximum. And then secondary to that, also have some conversations with Superintendent Peters as far as how we could try to look at building into the budget, that ditch maintenance project, so that he can get his, his, his work out there completed as well. As promised, we haven't proceeded with any final design on that, as we were waiting to hear back from that state aid, if a variance would be supported, so.
So it turns out, we originally thought we needed one variance.
Correct.
And now it turned out we needed two.
Correct.
Were they not in support of the original variance, or was it the second variance?
It was, it was, it was both, very, it was, one variance, they said, well, we think we could probably support that, but once we started looking at the, the second variance, they looked at it as, well, how much, essentially, it came down to making improvements along a roadway corridor that doesn't meet state aid requirements, not only in one situation, but now two.
So what, for the second variance request, is it, would it be incredibly humorous to complete the work within the parameters of not being a variance on that?
Correct.
Okay.
So we'll take a look at it, understanding that the two, the impetus of the project one was, of course, for the ditch maintenance, so we'll, we'll take a look at some options for getting some budget for that. And then secondary is, again, looking at that fund balance, so that we don't get to a situation, and we had some preliminary conversations with the state aid office within that regard as well, to, to make sure that, you know, look at what we have allocated for state aid routes, so that we would, can, so we can manage that, but-
And one thing to add, I mean, we did talk about the Halsted, as well as the Sunnyfield project coming up, so I don't see it as an issue, we, we have enough projects, I think, to spend down some of our, our fund balance there, so as long as we keep moving on the Halsted and the Sunnyfield projects, we'll be fine, I think, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then, one more item, just to bring to the council's attention, for the two thousand nineteen project, we had anticipated bringing closure documents for that project to the council. That being said, you may have noticed at the front here, the restoration work, where the sod is back behind the curb is a little high, the contractor has acknowledged that, that some work needs to be done, but we ran out of good weather to do that, so we're not recommending closing out that project until that work can get completed, so, I mean, the, the project is essentially complete, we just won't be closing it out until the spring, and when the contractor can get some favorable weather to come in and remedy that, so.
And on a high note, County Road Forty-four is open?
Forty-four is open. They do go down to one-lane restrictions at a couple of locations, so.
Are those gonna be going away pretty soon?
We don't, we haven't heard any indication to that effect, certainly having driven through the corridor from a maintenance perspective through the winter, you know, it would be, through, through my lens, it would look nice if we could get that fully open, but I haven't heard any indications that that would be the case anytime soon.
Well, at least you can get through, it may not be the best situation, but at least you can get through, so good, all right. All right. Moving, any other staff reports? So moving on to council reports, we'll start with Ms. Bruce.
Yeah, I'll start with St. Bonnie, because it's shorter. The advisory board voted not to fund the WAFTA, five thousand dollar payment to the WAFTA fund, but also just to keep the two thousand dollar payment that goes directly to WAFTAs to fund their organization, and that may affect what we end up paying them, but it has to be approved by council. So there's a chance it may just stay the way it was before, and there's a chance that it may drop by, by, actually, it's only gonna drop by two thousand, because the five thousand dollar fund, WAFTA fund payment, they were proposing to spread that out over other line items in the budget, so. Also, Shane Weber is not gonna be applying to be chief in January, they're interviewing two other candidates. He is planning to stay on the department, but he's not gonna be applying as chief. I think he's served his time, and he's been around for, I think, like twelve years, it's been a long time. I went to the Mount Fire Commission meeting, and we covered a lot of things, I, I think one of the things that I'd like to talk about at a, a council meeting is the retirement of their bond that they have for building their building. Our share of that, Minatrista's share of that is about seventy-two thousand dollars a year. Actually, that's what we, that's what's in our budget, but we actually only spent sixty-eight thousand of it, regardless, it's seventy-two thousand dollars a year that's going away at the end of twenty twenty-two, so twenty twenty-three, we won't be making that payment any longer on that building. That building was built in two thousand four, we've been paying for it all along, and the payment, the, the loan is paid off at the end of twenty twenty-two. So there is, the reason we need to talk about it now is because the fire department is, they, they're looking at, they call it a windfall, because they're assuming it's gonna keep coming in, but they're looking at this windfall that's gonna keep coming in, and they're starting to spend it, and they're actually dipping into reserves, anticipating this bond payment that ends in twenty twenty-two, the cities may still keep paying it, and they're anticipating that they can dip into their reserves by using this windfall to replenish the reserves. So I think it's worth having a discussion with the council about what Minatrista wants to do with that seventy-two thousand dollars that has been paying for the building, and that, that debt is, will be gone in twenty twenty-two. So I, if council would like to talk about that at a council meeting, I think it would be worth having a discussion. And there are uses, I mean, some of the things we discussed at the meeting-
Well, they gave a bunch of options, but, so first of all, to answer your first question, is the council interested in having either a work session or a council meeting agenda item?
This is for twenty twenty-three? That the money will be available?
Yes, but the reason it's important to talk about it now is in anticipation of that money continuing to come in, they're dipping into reserves and planning to replenish it with that money that could continue past twenty twenty-two.
Well, that was one option, that was one option, but I, again, I think they're just looking at, you know, what direction should, should they be thinking of, so I don't know that it's as urgent as you might think, I didn't get that, that it was real urgent, but they were just kind of saying, you know, there's about maybe five different options out there, what is, what are you, what are you interested in, since we're member, we're, obviously, we don't make the final decision, but they just wanted our input.
And the, the reason I wanted to do it before our next Mount Fire meeting is, we will be discussing the twenty twenty-one budget at the next Mount Fire meeting, it's on the agenda, or it's on the plan, and part of that is gonna be affected by this money.
So, Mayor and City Council, I did have some email correspondence with Councilmember Bruce over the last week or so about this, and I proposed to her, she wanted to add it to the meeting tonight, and I thought we had quite a full agenda already, and so I proposed to her that she bring it up under her council report, and then I would, and I ventured to guess that if you want to discuss it further, which I think you probably would, that we could do that at one of the two January meetings, whether it's Monday, the sixth of January, or Tuesday, the twenty-first of January. Those, both of those council meetings are ahead of the next Mount Fire Commission meeting, so there was not any desire on my part to ignore the issue, I just felt the timeliness of the issue, given the fact that we have two council meetings in January ahead of the Mount Fire Commission would be an appropriate time to discuss this.
So what am I missing here? Why are they expecting that after the obligations paid off, that cities would continue to pay?
They're not expecting it, they just simply laid out a number of different options.
Right.
One of the options would be that they don't levy for that anymore, another option is, there's a lot of different things coming up, equipment in the fire, in-
They've got a truck that is probably in need of replacement.
I, I heard, I heard the amount referred to as a windfall.
Well-
So, and, and I'm concerned about that, and I wanted to pass, this is the email that I sent to Mr. Barone, just so you all have that, because it does lay out some of the different options that are available to discuss as a council.
I think the best, what I would recommend is that we actually have, do add it, to a council meeting or work session in January, one of the two, rather than discussing it tonight, because I'd like to have staff have an opportunity to put together detailed information and, and present it, so that we have it in our packet beforehand, and that we can have an ample time to, to go through it and digest it, and be able to make a well-informed decision on it. So we'll bring that back in, in January?
Yeah, I can't tell you exactly which one, but it'll be on one of your agendas in January, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other? None, Mr. Trumpelen?
Pioneer Sarah Creek, we commissioned, signed a professional service agreement with Hawkinson Anderson to be our technical service provider for twenty twenty only, and internally, we agreed amongst ourselves that Wink Associates would be our fallback on a individual process if there was a conflict, conflict with Hawkinson, Hank Hawkinson's, because they are the engineers for two or three of the cities, so if there happened to be a conflict of interest on a project-
Oh, you're saying for this, for the member cities?
Right, for the member cities, then we would fall back to Wink.
Okay.
And, and starting in January, we were, will be working a lot with Wink on the, the fourth generation, that we need to get done and approved by the end of twenty twenty.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, great. Mr. Malater?
LMC, we did approve a couple of variances and docus that had been discussed for a number of meetings, I think three of prior to this. The approval process works a little bit differently, but they finally did get approved, and then we do every year, annual renewals of various agreements for our space and our notekeeping and things like that, so that is, we also had an update from the sheriff, as we provide funding to the sheriff's office for Water Patrol, they respond back in the early to report, we'll also be providing, as we do every year, feedback for our executive director for our performance evaluation, so that's in process.
Okay. Thank you.
WCC has not set a meeting date for December, I'm guessing it's gonna be another social night, they usually do something like that for the holidays.
So let's see, also attended the Mount Fire Committee meeting, and also- Also attended the mound fire committee meeting, and also the police public safety meeting, and I'll be attending on the 12th, the awards presentation to our police department, and I'll be attending the regional council of mayors meeting next Monday, and also Northwest League next Wednesday, and I'll be meeting with staff a couple of times too in December, so. That's it. Mr. Barone, I think we're done, right?
Yeah, but you guys gotta consent, be in the meeting, not me.
Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Malater made that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, Ms. Bruce seconded it. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes.